So. This is standard one of health and remember this is EC. Through twelve, remember it's all levels and what that means for the purposes of your exam is that you must be mindful. Of grade levels and age groups when you're thinking about what's appropriate as far as instruction for. Third graders as opposed to seventh graders or twelfth graders, you know um. What assessments are appropriate, what activities are appropriate topics um. And also ways in which you engage them and try to help. Understand complex ideas when they're younger, so much is uh hands on and um. Experience visualization, talking about it, obviously that continues on, but it's so very necessary for those early child children. EC through six. Because their brains are not wired just yet to think abstractly. We know that based on human growth and development, so looking at standard one, you'll see that they have the standard at the top, the. Health teacher applies knowledge of both the relationship between health and behavior. And the factors influencing health and health behavior. So a relationship if and for each of these, each of these standards, you should come up with your own. Um way of paraphrasing it like in summation in general um. Relationship of health and behavior. Not all health related things are, you know. Brought on by behavior, but many of them are and therefore in our control and how that knowledge helps influence. Influencing health and health behavior um and then there's. There's influences that are negative and positive, right? So everything within this. Overarching topic of. Knowing the relationship between health and behavior. So what you need to know as far as health and behavior is concerned and it breaks it apart from you kind of nicely like. Teachers of EC through four would focus on these things, so knowledge. Standards are um identified with this little K. For knowledge, what you need to know before you are in health class and there's a overarching like subtitle here. So we're talking about health behavior, this part here. Health related behaviors and how to promote or compromise health, promote or compromise. Very important ideas and how be certain behaviors, either they help you or they're gonna com- be compromising your health. Um types of food nutrients, principles of nutrition, these are ideas and there are specifics that you need to know. Um about foods, the food pyramid for sure, nutrients. Um the way in which we uh create or ensure a balanced diet or apply those principles of nutrition. To your diet, you have to know the specifics of it and if you don't really know, like you know what, I'm not. Super ready to instruct on the principles of nutrition, let me. Review it very quickly, so going through this document. With a fine tooth comb, not just reading it one time as like a surface reading, but reading for understanding, really asking yourself. Would I be able to sort of like describe the different nutrients that are needed off the top of my head? Um and if I can't and I need to go find that information and write it down on this paper, you are doing um. An exercise in metacognition after having read, deciding whether or not you comprehended it fully. Enough to instruct and if not uh finding support for those areas. Of weakness, you know, and you writing it down, putting it in your own words, drawing pictures um. It is a kinesthetic tactile activity that we know as scientists. AKA teachers creates um a neurological pathway, it helps internalize that knowledge that you read. On a surface level, then thought about whether you understood it or not, then sought out other information and sort of put it in your own words in a small note. That takes thinking power that helps create that ridge that's going to be retrievable later, so. As you're reading through each of these, you wanna try to be summarizing things, putting examples defining things. That um maybe you you need clarification with. And or asking questions because certainly you're gonna have to turn this into me and I want for you to be able to uh. Have, you know, if you have particular questions, remember what they are and remember them by engaging with this text in a in a. Scholarly way, we try to teach our students and we do teach our students to do this in reading classes. And in in their other classes as well, it is a strategy you would use with your students while they're trying to read. You know, challenging stuff, you want them to be thinking about their thinking, reflecting on if they understood it. It's not enough to just go through the motions and read, we really wanna read for understanding and for our purposes as instructors, we have to be able to read. Not just for understanding and for knowing, but for doing, we have to be able to do certain things with this knowledge. At different grade levels, so um again, this right hand side, this doing section, this skill. What can you do with your knowledge for the students? Regarding health behavior, you must be able to analyze ways to reduce health risks through behavior and to enhance and maintain. Health throughout the lifespan, that means you have to give them ways in which to analyze, right? Give them uh scenarios and articles and discussions that would produce students. Being able to do these things, cuz that's something that they'll be, they'll have to do, we'll take a look at the teaks, which is like. Not the student responsibility, but it's what they're supposed to learn while they're with you, it's our responsibility to make sure the the teaks are. You know, fully taught in the class and that the students master those knowledge concepts and skills. So it relates safe and unsafe harmful. Or positive because they also have to be able to do that in your health class, one of the things that they have to get out is they have to be able to. Identify safe and unsafe behaviors or like that would impede on. The person's health and ability to have a thorough. Uh lifespan, you know, the real real consequences, you know, if you if you ride a motorcycle. Which is a very popular thing to do, it increases negative health outcomes. There it there, it doesn't matter how safe you are, there are external extenuating circumstances. That could present an accident that would have negative health consequences, that's just statistically like true. So riding a a motorcycle is having to sort of. Accept that contract that you might get into a deadly crash with an automobile or an eighteen wheeler or. You know, any other myriad of complications, so but getting students at all grade levels to start thinking about these ideas. And thinking about, you know, vaping or uh other things, like even living a sedentary lifestyle, right? And having like limited at physical activity will shave years off your life, like it just is science. So um having students understand that and build positive behaviors, but we have to give them opportunities. To analyze, opportunities to discuss, opportunities to see those things, those um um sort of behaviors come to fruition. Analyze how personal health decisions and behaviors affect. Body systems and health, you have to be able to do this in order to do it with the students. Let's take a look at what the students have to know as far as health behaviors. So we're gonna look at health education and all of this you're gonna have access to, I'm gonna place these in a folder for you with the standards. So you can access them there, um but these are the teaks. And if you'll see, like if I move this out of the way, the nice little page, let's just take a look at. The seriousness of the webpage that we find it on. Um cuz I think people sort of forget that, the Office of the Secretary of State, this is a governmental. Legal document, Texas Administrative Code, this is the law. And and what the law says is that they've decided there's a particular goal for health education in Texas. And then there are particular knowledge concepts and skills. That we scaffold through the grade levels, beginning at kindergarten and there's a rhyme for the reason, uh a reason to the rhyme. Rather, beginning with kindergarten and then layering on first grade and building on those same principles towards that same end goal. And and bringing in new knowledge and skills, so let's take a look at what the goal is, what what is the goal for. Um health education that Texas has. The goal usually remains the same constant throughout the entirety of the grade levels, so. EC through twelve, the goal is the same, we're just learning new and different things as we get older. Uh revisiting some things, going deeper into some things, um but. Re- a thorough reading of these documents EC through twelve is absolutely crucial, not only is it the law. For you to have read this, at least a surface reading, you also have to be able to implement and do these things. With your students, so it behooves you to again, really critically um engage with this text. An- annotate the texts. Um and I know that this is on the computer, but you I believe you can print out a PDF, let's take a look if we can, I go back. Yeah, you can. They just added that, they never used to have that and I started teaching in two thousand three and um. It was just crazy to sort of get the teaks and then once we did have internet and they were on the internet, that was it, no PDFs. But now we have them, so that's great, so here's the elementary section and that's how I would tackle it, do it in different sections because. Growth, human growth and development is different at each of those sections, which is why we group them that way, elementary, we have to do particular things with elementary. To get them to be engaged, to get them to learn socialization as they're also in our class with with our younger kids. We're multitasking here, it's not just about health, it's about being a student and learning self-awareness and. Uh taking turns and and many things apart from it, so knowing um. What types of things students are able to do at each of the grade levels is important and that's part of pedagogy. Knowing the learning theory, what what works, what sort of activities work best with. Early child and elementary students because of their cognitive development at the moment. So let's look at the goal. And I'm gonna just. The goal of health education. Is to provide instruction. That allows youth to develop, youth develop and sustain. Healthy promoting behaviors throughout their lives. That's the overall goal. For Texas Health Education, the understanding and application of these standards that are listed EC through twelve. Will allow the students to continue to gather information about health, things are changing, they've been changing since, you know, when I was little. They've changed on what things are good to eat and what things not good to eat and like what, you know, things. We learn new things, science changes and it's ever evolving, see, they said it themselves, every evolving science of health, we just. We we are learning and having so many more advances to help us become. Health literate, right? We need to achieve literacy and we were trying to help the students become literate. In gestures of new knowledge, cuz things are gonna change from when they were in school and what was healthy possibly maybe. Cuz they have from when I was in, you know, even in high school um. Health education, knowledge and skills should be presented to the students in a positive manner, positivity, very important. Healthy living is not a bummer, it is a it is a fun and smart choice, you know, that really enhances. The life, not just the the life expectancy, but the quality of life, you know what I'm saying, like the. The quality of the actual life that you have and then the lo- its longevity, so really just. Sort of describing it in a positive manner because society is a little bit different, y- you know. And uh fast food and all of the stuff that's like in music videos and all, most of that's not healthy like behavior. Health behaviors, so we have to really sort of uh promote that positive. Concept of healthy living and responsible decision making, like yeah, it looks fun to do these dangerous things, maybe. Not even really to someone who sort of really understands the out- the negative outcome of some of these risky behaviors. Um responsible decision making is very important, so healthy self-concept, you know, we don't want people to have. Like uh eating disorders um as a result of. The promotion of our health education, but we want them to have a healthy concept and to make responsible decisions in their behaviors. Um physically and then, you know, what what they eat, the standards will help students reinforce. Foster and apply positive character traits, so they should get lots of practice to help them reinforce. Foster and apply positive character traits, like making good decisions, talking about making those good decisions in class. There are essential skills that repeat throughout the five strands, so. There are essential skills and they repeat throughout five strands that repeat throughout the grade levels. And embody the interconnection of health literacy and we're gonna take a look at what those are. These skills include decision making. Problem solving, goal setting, maintaining. Healthy relationships with self and others, seeking help and support. Recognizing various influences on health such as social, environmental, media and genetic. These skills, so those are the five, uh no, those are the essential skills that are gonna be repeated through the five strands, these ones. In each of the five strands that are gonna be continuous, those same concepts. Responsible decision making, problem solving, you know, maintaining healthy relationships with yourself. And others and and part of that is responsible decision making, you know, being responsible for yourself and 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 um. Sort of self-care that you're not gonna put yourself in in a bad situation, these skills developed early on. When developed early on and reinforced throughout a student's education, will foster the mastery. We want them to master, we wanna help them master this healthy concepts, these healthy concepts and. Their ability to make wise decisions to problem solve, so we're not just talking about health, we're taking teaching them lifelong skills. Lifelong skills that can be applied to every single um, just like every single scenario. I- in life, after they leave you outside of the classroom while they're not in class, while they're on vacation with their family. To, you know, healthy, responsible decision making, maintaining. Healthy re- relationships with self and other, seeking out help and and support. A problem solving, goal setting and learning how to sort of transfer those skills i- into other areas of life. Really helps our students be literate as far as uh healthy living. Cuz healthy living even includes like, if you have someone, let's say you've been friends forever and they are very toxic and they do bad things. And they like, you know, get cause arguments when you're out in places um. Removing yourself from a. Um negative or um sort of toxic relationship is a is a positive step. A decision that you make in order to keep yourself. Safe, you know, uh above all, so there's lots of um concepts and conversations. And skills that the students learn and build in their health education class and they're so very important, just for them being healthy individuals mentally. Physically um and you know emotionally. Health class educators are encouraged to partner with school counselors as they very often do. Where available to schedule time to deliver classroom guidance lessons and. The the counselors love doing that, I mean, they really do, like going in and giving these many lessons on responsible decision making. Or healthy self-conscious concept or healthy self-care or the idea of a friendship and when it's okay to. Um you know, withdraw from a friendship when it no longer is safe for you and it affects self-care. And and those are, those are things that like nobody taught me and so I just stayed with the friend that always got me in trouble, you know? Kind of mean to me, you know, and she still talks to me on Facebook, I still am friends with her, like I've never cut that off, but like. I should have, somebody should have told me, you know what I mean, and and so uh. Just getting the students to think about those things and to think that it's okay to pull away when things are unsafe for you. Um i- and um it's it doesn't make you a bad person. Let's see. So use your resources, counselors would love to help you, there are people in the community. Who would love to come in and give lessons, um lots of, you know. Health individuals that wanna give back to the community, like so many. So. In Kinder through grade three and this is important for you to make note of in your notes, that Kinder through grade three has a specific goal. Students gain an understanding of health information and skills through five strands. So there are five strands in that dictate, remain the same in kindergarten through third grade and that's. Physical health and hygiene, mental health and awareness, wellness, sorry, healthy eating and physical activity. Injury and violence prevention and safety and alcohol, tobacco and other drugs, those five strands. Will um be consistent throughout kindergarten. And grade three, kindergarten first, second and third, so each one of them will have a strand for physical health and hygiene. But don't forget, you're not just talking about physical health and hygiene and each one of these strands, what are you required to do? You're required to provide instruction on these skills here in each one of those strands. So in each one of those strands, we're thinking about decision making, problem solving, goal setting when it comes to uh these. Physical health and hygiene, mental health and wellness, eat, healthy eating, physical activity. Injury and violence prevention and safety and then alcohol, tobacco and drugs, so. Physical health and hygiene education helps to prepare students for improved lifelong health outcomes, learning about the body systems. Lays the foundation for personal health and hygiene, health literacy and preventative behaviors wanna prevent. Behaviors later on in life, empower students to make informed choices to support self, family and community. B, which is the second strand, mental health and awareness, wellness, I don't know why I keep on saying awareness. Wellness strand, I've just been talking all day long, I think my tongue is tired, it's like, get, oh, stop it. The mental health and wellness strand recognizes. That knowledge and skills necessary to manage emotions and this is so important because not everybody has healthy models. Of like what a reaction to a particular emotion is, you know, to jealousy, to failure. It might be that their models at home give inappropriate modeling and therefore they come with that and so it's very important. Beginning early on to discuss what emotions are and what what an appropriate reaction is to such emotions. And how to manage it if we feel frustrated or upset or um so uh so that they this managing of themselves. Their mental health and wellness is so important in their ability to overcome adversity later on. Even in something as simple as like doing math and I and I'm in third grade and I start a new uh. You know, a new section in math, I was doing really well, I'm feeling the top of the world and now I don't know what I'm doing and I just got an E on my paper and I'm. Melting down, their ability to say, listen, math is a learning process, we just started it, I just need to practice. And manage emotions or seek help when they need it instead of melting down is what we need them to do and so. This leg is so important for their ability to be academically successful. Cuz they need to have that endurance um for failure cuz we we fail a lot as we learn, right? We make mistakes all throughout, that's what the assessment is for, nobody gets it out of the gate, shebang, you're good, all across the board, that's. Not a thing and so there are letdowns and there are and this mental health uh strand focuses on social emotional health. Social emotional awareness, social emotional skills, which many Fortune five hundred companies say that they value more important. Than a uh like a potential employee's academic skills, like they want you to be social emo- have. Highest of social emotional intelligence and skills, cuz they know that you're gonna be able to overcome adversity, that you're gonna seek out help when necessary. You're not gonna be causing problems and having like uh you know, competition problems with your team members, you know, for notoriety. When there's a goal at stake, if you have high social emotional awareness, you you are able to manage emotions, you're able to. Take into account other people's uh emotions and potential and and really come together to reach. And overcome adversity, so that's what this one is about. Necessary skills to manage emotions, reactions and relationships are essential to reaching one's full potential. Students gain knowledge and about social emotional health, including developing a healthy self-conscious concept. Understanding risk and protective factors and identifying and managing mental health and wellness concerns. In the early grades, students develop fluency around emotions and self-regulation. And understand the relationship between feelings, thoughts and behaviors. Um in subsequent grades, students learn and practice appropriate ways to solve conflicts. Subsequent grades, so after third grade, we begin to put it into practice, but we certainly begin to talk about what these emotions are. And how to manage them ourselves and then how to manage interpersonal conflicts at another person. K through three, we're working on ourselves, managing our own issues, our own problems, later do we begin to develop. Um interpersonal skills and working with those conflict resolutions so that we can maintain those healthy relationships. Work to develop a positive self-image and develop healthy self-management skills. In the health and eating section, so at the each of these, you'd wanna just do a little. A little summary, say it in in a couple of words, like here I'd be able to say social emotional development. Um learning about managing yourself, self-concept. Off to the side, it's mostly what it's about, later that leg is gonna include more, it's gonna improve, include more practice. In in solving interpersonal conflicts, dealing with issues of uh social emotional context. And and being able to make responsible decisions and develop coping me- mechanisms and healthy management styles. I I do, I am gonna have to go cuz it's gonna be one thirty and I have a session right after, I don't know why. Callan Lee isn't giving me, it used to give me a fifteen minute break in between. A where it wouldn't sign people up and now it's doing it back to back and yesterday I feel so bad, I met with the girl today, so luckily I just penciled her in, but. Um I just went over because normally it'll tell me you have fifteen minutes till your next session and it does, it no longer does that, that's not a thing. And so I literally have a session that starts in one minute, so I'd like for you to uh and I'm gonna send these to you, um these two documents. Um actually, it's gonna be more because remember the teaks is broken down into those three areas, which typically. That's how we group as far as learning theory, right? And what we do with different groups of students to help them learn best and have them be engaged. To help them with the particular things that are going on internally, physically um. Uh and and so there's gonna be four, three documents related to your teaks and then your standards documents. And I want for you to begin annotating and doing a deep dive, um put things in your own words and if you have to. Uh Google anything, so we'll just look one of them in specific, we'll look at. This is uh kindergarten, right? So and this is part of the injury and violence prevention safety. This is part of the interpersonal violence and the student understands the impact of interpersonal violence. And the importance of seeking guidance and help to maintain personal safety, so the student is expected to identify. Bullying behavior and the role of a bystander, it is something that we have to allow them to learn and practice. And then measure that they really get that, that bullying is not okay, there's lots of ways to bully. And it's never okay to be a bystander, a bystander is someone who's like silently agreeing to this. Um identify ways to discourage a bully, describe appropriate actions to take in response to bullying. Such as telling a parent or another trusted adult, and so when you're doing instruction for kindergartners, they can't really read yet. Most of this is gonna be presented orally and or with visuals. So that you can illustrate these ideas, but this is gonna be a lot of communication with them. Name people who can provide healthcare guidance such as parents, family members with kindergarten, it's very basic. Remember, this is the building box so with which we build vertically, EC through twelve. All of the skills in order for to achieve that goal, to achieve the goal of uh. The youth developing and sustaining healthy promoting behaviors throughout their lives. And furthermore, being able to achieve health literacy, that's really important because. We can just like teach them what we know now and the behaviors that we know now, but things might change and there might be new things, we need to teach them how to. Seek out knowledge on the new things dealing with health, new sports, new whatever. How to interpret it in order to continue to adapt to that that the the science of health. So I'm gonna put those in in a folder for you. So I'm gonna put those in in a folder for you. I will send that information to you. I also will be sending you